If ownership wants to pursue that, what do you think of the idea? And would it be possible?
So you have with hail and with the little canopy.
So you want us to...
Little on it, right?
Little disruption that you might not view as good.
Well, it's like part of the master plan opportunity for ownership. So if you could review that and approve it.
So it's...
As an option for the future.
So you would not have those canopies? You would just have the...
So these are simply over the storefronts that they would be...
This is something else, in addition.
In addition, this is an additional element.
So just one question about that, that they're retractable awnings, I assume. And if you do go for awnings, I'm assuming everything...
They're not retractable, they're fixed.
Stepex?
They're fixed, yes.
Okay, and then if you did do it though, you would make it consistent around the whole building?
Consistent.
Now like one tenant would get one and one wouldn't get one or something?
I think the idea is that they would be consistent and the signage above would give the tenants their different identifiers.
Okay, we have, as a testimony, we have community board five recommending approval for everything. And with a thirty-four to two vote. And I think that may be it. And I assume no further comments, discussion. Fred.
Important building. It seems like we've been here once before and I guess we're here again. With an architect who did a wonderful job on the I Miller, which I want to equate with this. Because my view of the original building is that unlike some buildings in Times Square area, this building has an architectural character particularly at the lower level, which is unusually refined, let's say. And it's that second and third story band that almost looks like something clipped on to the building. It's a fascinating and unusual element. Therefore, covering it up, and you're uncovering it to some degree from what's been approved, but still covering it up as much as you are, gives me some pause. And it's the, I'm glad you left with this slide because this is where I wanted to show how the nineteen thirty-four scheme allowed more of that banding to be seen. And so while I appreciate the reduction, because I think it is, I mean, my view is that this building should have less signage than maybe some other buildings in Times Square. And that we should be able to reveal this very interesting piece of architectural element the way that the I Miller building was also able to reveal a very beautiful part of its facade by eliminating some signage from there and maybe putting it in other places. I don't have a recipe of how that might happen and I have no idea if any either, if any one other commissioner is going to agree with this approach. So we'll have to just wait and listen. But anyway, that's my thought, that it somehow should be rearranged, not necessarily reduced, but it might be a reduction to allow more of the, say, the cornice element, if you want to call it that, on the, above the third floor, to be visually understanding that this was a piece that wrapped around the building, an important element, architectural element. Otherwise, I think the storefront system is fine the way it's been designed. I like the boldness of the doors, the new doors. I like the design of the new marquee entrance for the office building. I think the canopies are a little strange, but seeing such a prominent picture of them historically, it's a little hard, we're a little hard pressed to say that we shouldn't allow them if ownership should decide that a tenant wants to do it. So I guess I'm okay with that. But usually, a canvas awning is a retractable awning. So I'd be interested to hear other thoughts on that.
It is an interesting building because the historic record, which was so well documented by the presentation, has shown that the building, although it has a strong degree of architectural coherence, stepped on that coherence nearly from day one. And that that was, that's part of the history of this building. And I agree with Fred that, that I think that the second and third floor band is uniquely distinctive and should be integrated perhaps with the signage program. I think though that that can be done, or not though, I think that that can be done, as Fred had said, with absolutely no reduction in the quantity of the signage. I think it has to do with the placement. I think that the clustering of it in such a kind of architectural way to kind of almost replace the band goes, it winds up obscuring it more than if it were more perhaps helter-skelter located across the band so that you could see through it, around it, and kind of understand the coherence of this architectural element seen against, or below, or around the subsequent sign additions. So I think that by just relocating them in a more dispersed way across the band, not necessarily trying to preserve a kind of pristine area over the old entrance and at the far west end, I think that you could have your signs and light them too. I think that the storefront modifications are generally good. I think that the reintroduction of the precast band is nice. I think that the brass signage slash louver zone is really good. I think that the door options are fine in terms of their weight, but are too low. And I draw the inspiration for that comment from the unbuilt elevation where the heavy brass, or presumably whatever metal elements there, did go to the underside of the sign band. And I think that the elimination of the transoms in this would have these very heavy elements appear less chunky and weighty and more kind of belonging to the architecture as opposed to belonging to the sign program, which is, I think, appropriate. The one thing that I, I'm okay with the new lobby entrance on the far west end of the building. The one thing that I am kind of disappointed about is the elimination of the building lobby as the entrance to the building. And I know we don't regulate it and I know we can't do anything about it, but I want to express my sadness and disappointment at the fact that that entrance, which is relatively unusual in Times Square as being an identified building entrance, a glorified, aggrandized, architecturally important building entrance to an office building, is going to basically be turned into a facade remnant for an undifferent, a potentially undifferentiated tenant within. And I would encourage the applicant, or the developer, to consider that even though it is not within our mandate here. I think that the canopy at the corner is jarring, but I think that the precedent of the Translux marquee and the way that the building has developed over time makes it appropriate. And I think that the canvas awnings are fantastic because they're so unusual in Times Square and they just come out of kind of left field in the immediate environment. I think they're good. And I would encourage them, the applicant, to consider making them operable.
Yeah, so I agree with a lot of those comments, but I want to point out that the signage that we approved in 2010, I remember the long discussions we had about this where we had looked at the idea of revealing both bands, the one above the second floor and above the third floor, kind of came to the conclusion that a sign won't fit in that space between the second and the third floor band. So kind of said, okay, well with that one, there's a historical precedent for that level being concealed, but that we wanted to maintain the clarity of that second floor band. So we don't really want to contradict what we've already done. And I do understand that the signs become too thin there. I do think though that kind of opening the space between the signs helps reveal a little bit of that third floor sign band, remind you that it's there. So kind of collecting them so tightly together misses that opportunity. With, I actually kind of lament the loss of that sign that was proposed before, the one that was kind of in the middle of the building. Because if anything, the building has this history of being almost like a sign structure on the corners. And there is some sort of joy in signage that's lost by keeping everything down at sort of knee height relative to the scale of the building. So I'd encourage them to consider moving that LED sign up where we had it before just because I think it will animate the facade in a way that's more in keeping with its location and its history. With respect to the storefront, I, my main concern really is about the hierarchy that's being imposed by these new storefronts at the loss of the importance of the main entrance. And so what I'm really concerned about with this A/B selection process where you can put as many storefronts as you want along that facade essentially, is that it will actively render the important main entrance into nothing, blackness. And so I would actually say that the system has to be such that if there is one major tenant, as is shown on these renderings, that that has to be the entrance to the major tenant. And so what that does, the main entrance, and then you can have subsidiary entrances, but that's why I'm concerned about this corner treated with this very large awning as if it's the main entrance to that single tenancy. If there's a preparation in the master plan, it seems to me that a corner entrance with signage over the awning can only work if there's a separate tenancy. And I don't know exactly how you describe that, but it doesn't get to be A/B, A/B just whenever you want it. It has to do, has to do with the tenancy inside. And I think that's it.
Okay, in general, I actually am a proponent of LED signage for this kind of district, which is, you know, as befitting modern advertising. And I think it does work. I like the fact that the signage has been somewhat reduced, both on the top in terms of the proposal and in general, I think is good though, hearing the comments of Commissioner Bland about trying to, I do think that, I like the fact that there was somewhat more of the corners and the horizontals on the second floor and third floor revealed. Well, not, I guess not more on the third floor, but on the second. And this new proposal, I thought, was desirable. I mean, I could support something that tried to do more of that, as Fred was suggesting, in a little bit different way. But I think that the overall amount of signage is definitely something that can support. And I think that the treatment of the storefronts and the canopies generally also, I find suitable for this district as Michael was expressing earlier with regard to the additional entrance. And, you know, yes, it is sad that that's not the primary entrance, but that's just, that's what's going on with the use of the building and the fact that that wonderful original entrance is preserved. And I think that the materials that they're using, from my perspective, are appropriate.
So I like overall what's been proposed, but I think that some of the tactics used in doing the corner and the newer entrance diminish the importance of the main entrance. And I think that this is a building that's, you know, I think is very symmetrical side and has that very big ornate entrance. And I guess one of the things is that with the corner, it has, like, the doors that were taller, thicker and grained. And that really, I think, overpowers the importance of the main. Anyway, that's what I would like to see something done to maybe pop off the burden of the main entrance. And diminish, not so much the fact that there is a corner entrance, but somehow that it's subservient to the...
Okay, Michael Devonshire.
Well, I agree with much of what's been said. Actually, for me, the repurposing of that main entrance, because it's such a monumental and focal point of that facade, I don't find that disassociating it from the use that it's got now is going to diminish it at all. I think it's just, it's going to be fine. The one issue that I had, I think that Michael Goldblum brought up, was the possibility of continuing those new entries up to the second floor band so that they make that connection between the ground and the band, as in the original drawings. But everything else, I'm fine with, with the comments of my colleagues.
Hi, I agree with a lot of the comments, but I'm just going to read from my notes because I made them as you guys were doing the presentation. Very good presentation, by the way. And I think that, and it could be the way it's rendered, that the bulky, the surrounds around the storefronts and the canopy appear to be very bulky. And again, it could be the way it was rendered, but I think that they need to be more delicate in order to copy the original entry because that entry is so unique. And so, and the material that you passed around does not replicate the entry. It needs to replicate. It really needs to be of a higher quality to match that entryway. I think that the awning should be retractable to also make it more delicate because there's something about this Art Deco building, even though it's a big bulky building, but the details are so delicate. And I think that could easily be fixed to replicate them. I think the signage is good. If it's possible to make the second floor cornice a little more visible, but I, you know, this building is about signage, so I think it's fine. And I think that options, the A/B options are fine. And the last thing I have on my notes is I think that the corner canopy of this just overshadows that beautiful Art Deco entry. And it just needs to be toned down a little bit and to come more in tune with the entry, with the original entryway. And I know that this designer is totally capable of doing that, so I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, and as well as doing the other things, or rethinking the other things we've suggested here. No action today, but continue to pursue the strands of, or the lines of concern here. Work with the staff to do that. We'll re-present it, won't take any action today. Motion, second. Without objection, the hearing is closed. We're going to do one more before we break? Okay.
Item number 10 is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan. Docket number fifteen dash five four zero two, block ten twenty-one, lot nineteen, sixteen nineteen Broadway, the Brill Building, an individual landmark and Art Deco style office building.
Thank you.
Designed by Victor A. Bark Jr. and built in nineteen thirty to thirty-one. This is an application to alter the ground floor and install storefronts and to install signage.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Gray with Landmark's staff. There were some slight changes to the presentation yesterday, so we're just downloading the most recent thumb drive. Okay, John Gray with Landmark's staff, Commissioners. The application before you is at the Brill Building at the corner of Broadway and West Forty-Ninth Street. The historic image before you. Shows the building in nineteen thirty-four. This building was built with retail on both the Broadway facade and the West Forty-Ninth Street facade. And the proposal is in two phases. The first area of work that the applicant is proposing is to construct new storefronts on both the Broadway and West Forty-Ninth Street facade. They would remove the existing ground floor infill, which had all been replaced before designation. The only historic elements on the ground floor are the Broadway entrance. They would create a new main entrance on the West Forty-Ninth Street facade and install new storefront infill on both sides of the building. The second part of the proposal will be a change to the signage on both street facades and also on the roof where they are proposing LED signage. Shelley Friedman will start the presentation.
Hearing open for that purpose, motion, second. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shelley. Shelley Friedman, Friedman.com for the applicant. There's a bit of a deja vu here that we want to re-equate the commission with as you consider this application. The property was designated in March of two thousand and ten as an individual landmark. We had been working with the staff prior to that point and an NOR was issued for the ground floor retail that you're going to be, and the entrances that you're going to be considering this afternoon. Our application came in in April, a month after designation, for the signage which you considered and you approved. And for the, and that includes the rooftop sign which you considered and approved. At the time, the tension in the application, we spent five months in front of the commission on our certificate of appropriateness for the signage. The tension was between wanting, as I recall, the commission wanted to see a very lively presentation of this building, a very more pizzazz going on at the ground floor against the interest in not covering up the building, the important aspects, the distinctive aspects of the building. So there was this tension about how much to be visible and how much, and how much signage we should keep adding to this building to create the sense of liveliness that the commission was seeking. At the end, we agreed on and you approved a grid system that covered some portions of the facade and that we were permitted to build, to install Mylar plastic signs within that grid. But I would say it was a much debated principle about whether we were doing enough to bring the Brill into the twentieth century, twenty-first century in terms of its lighting. The application you have, now that application, that certificate of appropriateness because the signage still lives, but the NOR has expired. Previous ownership did not pursue the renovation of the building that it intended. Again, this was two thousand and ten, two thousand and eight was a pretty bad, pretty bad market. It took several years for the market around Times Square to improve. And the previous owner did not proceed with the installation and in fact sold the building to present ownership. So we now are applying a certificate of appropriateness to the ground floor, the ground floor entranceway, for the signage and the rooftop signage. The signage we are requesting is now LED signage. Back then, we could not really proceed, the technology wasn't there. It was, it created all kinds of problems. What you approved was Mylar. We believe with LED technology, we have solved the tension. We can do more about lighting this building. We can make it more dynamic and more vibrant with less space. And the application that we're presenting to you today actually would have less surface coverage than the originally approved, originally approved application for Mylar signs. So that's the history here. Want to introduce Elise Quaysbarth, who will take you through the history.
Okay, thank you, Shelley.
As Elise takes over, I'll just mention, Commissioners, the previous signage had illuminated with signs that were on outriggers either below the sign or above the sign.
Thank you very much.
Could at some point the applicant just indicate what the difference in percentage is between coverage before and the previous application and this one?
That's a very reasonable question and we'll get there, but it'll be a little bit before we get there. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Elise Quaysbarth from Higgins Quaysbarth. Shelley gave you the recent history. I'm going to take you back to the early history of the building. It was constructed in nineteen thirty to thirty-one. And I'm going to start with a historic photo from nineteen thirty-four because this tells the whole story, summarizes it. We'll grind into some details. But it's kind of interesting that they've associated this twentieth century popular music was actually for the Brill Brothers, who were not music people, but haberdashers who had their shop here on the corner from nineteen thirty-two to nineteen forty. They actually owned the property.
Thank you.
The building, it was completed in thirty-one. This is thirty-four, so it's pretty close to the time of construction. There was a Translux Theater on the north end of the building. There's the center main entry right here. On the second floor, we had a number of signs, both on Broadway and Forty-Ninth Street, and then this big corner sign. Many of them were lit and we'll see later on evidence of signs that were kinetic as well as just being neon and backlit. And then, of course, the Camel sign, which was on top of the building, came on very early. So the building history, or has a history of signs. And we had to rely very much on the historic photographs to help us with the designs for the storefronts. So we'll try to cover both of those as we go along. The existing conditions to begin with, this is fairly recent, a fairly recent photograph. The big sign between the ground floor and the second floor. The material that's on Broadway, the corner, and all the way down to forty, to the west end was put in, replaced in the nineteen nineties. We have documentation for that and you see some details. The spandrel panel that went along here was stucco, at least in this location. Back behind here, we doubt that there was anything, and this went on clear here. But our plan is to re-establish a spandrel that goes all the way across as our photos indicate that. This is from the west, the Brill Building is right here, Ambassador Theater. This shows the ground floor condition and the west end, which is covered with corrugated aluminum. We know from documentation and also some recent information that this area was very, very much altered and that's the area where we're planning to introduce the new entry. This is a view of Broadway elevation and the north elevation. And you can see just glimpses of a sign that exists today on the roof, but the architects will go through that in a little bit more detail. Just more details of the ground floor. This stucco panel, the Colony sign here, is the detail of the corrugated aluminum. There's a mechanical space here, a non-original entry into the building and then one that was covered up. And then there's more details on this side as well. All of this is from the nineteen nineties. This is the most exquisite entry and luckily it still bears one element that remains intact and will remain intact in the new center of traction on this side of the building. So in nineteen thirty, we had one drawing from the period. And it's, and this is a photo during construction. It's pretty clear from the subsequent photos that will show you that while this may have been the intention for the ground floor, that's not what actually got constructed in terms of storefronts. And unfortunately, this construction photo has most of the building up, but the storefronts haven't been added yet. We know that by nineteen thirty-two, the Translux Theater was installed, so we believe that there were no commercial storefronts at the north end of the building. This is the north end here. You can see right here the historic existing entry. And the theater had multiple entries, the ticket office and a great big marquee. Jack Dempsey moved in in the nineteen thirties, in the late thirties, with a restaurant. And this is a detail from the tax photo. And again, there was a big sign on this side and new entry and storefront. None of that exists today.
You know when Dempsey's left, by any chance?
Seventy-four, I think, to date.
I remember that place. So it's not that bad, though.
Do you have any party photographs?
No, but... No, but Jack Dempsey would sit in the window from time to time.
Wow.
What's that? I missed, no, no frosted glass, touche, perfect.
So the, this is the historic photo from nineteen thirty-six looking down Forty-Ninth Street. And there's some changes from thirty-four in that the awnings have started to change at this end. We still have the traditional awning here and something else with signage happening. It's clear that spandrel goes down to the end of the building and the sign band. And there are other photographs that show this more clearly, but mostly revealing the stuff that's really dark and hard to interpret. The, again, this sign here that was lit, there's a sign on Forty-Ninth Street and a multiplicity of signs and layers, which is part of what we're going to build on with our new proposal. This is the same year, nineteen thirty-six, but we must have caught it at a moment when the awnings were being changed as they moved down the building. And again, you see the cacophony of signage and the marquee from Translux. This is a sign that's, I think this was the Paradise Theater sign that advertised what was going on on the second floor. Then, from the nineteen forties, we just put these all together. The Turf Restaurant moved in in the nineteen forties. So if you look at this nineteen thirty-nine photo, it was right as Grill was getting ready to move out. And you can still see their sign band and the storefront looks like it may be papered up. Turf came along and it appears that they really transformed the corner. And this is a photo that shows a little bit later where they put a corner entry in, the spandrel panel is gone. And there's a little bit in here from nineteen sixty, sixty-four that shows that aluminum panel on the other end is starting to show up. Again, you still have signage, but as the uses of the second floor began to change, the signs at the base of the building began to diminish a little bit. This is detail of what exists on the west end, a very late entry in our understanding of the building. This looks like it's from a photo from the nineteen seventies that showed the original entry into the, side entry to the lobby. Obviously, today it's moved into the place where there was a coffee shop. And we have a better detail on what was happening up here. Some probes show some damaged masonry on this side, which is right there, and missing masonry on this side. So it just supports the evidence that the whole side over there has been pretty heavily altered and starting fairly early, nineteen sixties. Nineteen eighty-five photograph shows that Colony has moved in after Turf moved out and they pretty much colonized the Turf Restaurant, sorry.
Pun intended.
And it just happened, I couldn't help myself. But they, they just put up a sign and then in the nineteen nineties, there was a whole new storefront system that was created for them and a storefront system for the north end of the building as well. So there's been a lot of change for this building. And I think that our proposal for the storefronts works as much as possible with the documentation that we have, vault head, sign band, plate glass, signage and sign grill. Just to step back a little bit to talk about the signs on the roof. As I said before, the Camel sign was put up very, very early in the nineteen thirties. It was lit and then in the probably late forties or early fifties, it was changed out for this very large Budweiser sign. Both of those signs were lit. Here's our Camel sign right here and you can see the Budweiser sign in this dusk photo that's lit as well. The existing signs are final and rather tame in comparison. And I think that Jonathan Marvel will describe that when we get to it. And I think that we're ready for Jonathan to describe the proposed storefronts and signage.
Thank you, Elise. Jonathan Marvel, Marvel Architects. I'm going to talk about the three packages, the storefront and then new building entry and then the lower signage and then the rooftop signage in that order. And just to, to reiterate what you've just seen, very quickly, this is the existing building, Colony's gone. We now have a retail corridor that's changed dramatically in Times Square and new ownership wants to, wants to work with the new possibility so there's, there are no tenants lined up yet, but we want to give the building some flexibility. So what we're asking for today is a master plan storefront request to allow for possible A and B swapping to happen and then the signage would follow that accordingly. So here are the, the important things in this, the red arrows indicate the primary entries, the existing historic entry, the existing corner entry that we'll be refurbishing and then a new building entry on Forty-Ninth Street with minor storefront entries flanking those and filling in between. The rendering highlights the existing wonderful Broadway entry with highly decorative brass panels in a kind of a vertical format and black granite surrounding that with brass details around the store, door, front doors. And we're going to be picking up on that in the proposed, on the Forty-Ninth Street in this rendering here and I'll dive in. But the same materials will be used there. So the detail progressively goes from the top, the street elevation to honing in. And finally, the proposed building entry with black granite panels flanking a brass, a true brass canopy that, and a kind of engraved grill lettering that will be inlaid with brass. The proposed cast concrete that will be matching the entablature on the fourth floor will run on top of that. And here's an elevation and reflect concealing plans and section. So here's the canopy over the door, the building storefront comes up against the black granite panels that are framing that with the Brill wording there. The reflect concealing plan up on the top shows how we'd like to have some musically inspired lights that randomly draw you into the lobby itself. And that shows up in section here. The brass rods really are going to be the elements that you'll see as fins and you'll see air between them and they draw you into the building proper. Inspired by that, we'd like to tackle the redo of the corner signage with a bold canopy that's horizontal and here it is on the corner. It wraps around and it is also rivved in brass with stand-up signage on top of it in that, in that kind of vertical fashion out at the very edge. And then within that, we'll have our typical brass painted aluminum storefront system that will be, the color will match the historic facade and also that will be the element that will define the banding that runs around and ties in with the other storefronts. Now here are the A and B options for the infill conditions. On the left is, is the storefront, the fixed storefront, option A. So it's got the black granite base, fixed glass, the painted aluminum signage band and then the new pre-cast concrete entablature. Option B is dropping in a storefront door system in, within that, within that basic frame. So black granite base coming up with the aluminum that's colored and brass to match. And here's a detail through that whole element right here. So the doors are inset eighteen inches and the, otherwise everything is flush up on top. So stepping back, the elevations on Forty-Ninth Street on the left, Broadway on the right. And these are the proposed options just for purposes of identification. So two smaller storefronts on the right of the historic, one in the middle and then one down here, the banding and everything as a master plan gesture for you to review. And the, there's kind of a existing and proposed. So you can see how we're taking that cast concrete and running it all the way across and then that underneath that will flag the black granite new building entry. And then the black granite runs around here at the base throughout. And then the options A or B in these three days, since we don't know the tenant requests, yes or no?
Yeah, just while you're going over the entrances, could you explain the importance of the Forty-Ninth Street entrance where there's now a new canopy? Obviously, it's the corner and there's a historic entrance. So with the purpose of that entrance, what's it going to lead to and why does it need a canopy? That's all.
Thank you. So going back to the, to the overall rendering and elevation. So here's the historic entrance, which will no longer be the building entrance. The building entry point, because of where all the elevators are located, this is the most strategically desired place for a new building.
So it'll kind of be the principal of the...
That'll be the principal entry for the tenants inside, on the upper floors of the building.
Okay.
And so this, that, the historical one will be what, the entrance to a store?
To a store.
A store.
One of the many options available to the tenants who will be signing up for the I find the ground floor and the lower level, we'll go with it and maybe the second floor too. So there's all sorts of new, Times Square is the hottest place in town right now for retail. So I think they're trying to have as many options as possible.
And the black granite is something that's used now that exists now?
Yes, yes. And that, yes, the black granite flanks the historic storefront. And that's one, that's the band that we run across where we're also going to clad a fire exit door, which will be at the very end of the, of the building on, of upper Broadway.
The fire exit door is covered in granite or it's just the rattling surround?
Just the cladding. It'll be a painted metal door with black granite surround to sort of match the proposed building entry, which will also have a, an egress door, an exit door, service door.
Okay, keep going.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And then here's the Broadway elevation, existing and proposed with the A and B options in these two locations here and in these two locations here. Obviously, we're not going to put an A option there. And, let's see, continue. Now I'm going to talk about some of the signage issues on the, above the storefront area. As a reminder, the bowtie has shifted its epicenter with the TKTS red steps and the Brill very, very nicely sits up at the northern end of the bowtie. And you can see in this night shot, the sign on top of the roof is prominently there in that view. We want to reiterate that some of this earlier signage was moving parts, the banding along here, apparently this was a kind of a time sequential pulse would move around and so we feel that this is allowing us to participate with LED signage as the rest of the Times Square area is going in that direction. These are reminders, this is over the I Miller Building, this is the New Amsterdam, all the LEDs now. And so here's the existing building with the approved signage not installed on the right. And now for your review, the approved signage on the left and what we're proposing on the right. Their, the question was asked, we've shifted everything down, so now it's below the third floor, the fourth floor entablature in cast concrete. So everything that was above is now coming below that line. We're about twenty-five percent less square feet from what was, what was approved. We've eliminated the idea of having an open air armature entirely. We felt that the LED wasn't, because we don't have those outrigger lights that went along with the armature, we felt that LEDs, we could, we could drop the armature, but we are keeping the kind of the framed element over here that was one of the varieties that you had requested that we, that we looked into. And so we're keeping that one. Everything does get a little smaller, a little tighter. And the principal thing is dropping in, very much attuned with the historic sign that used to be there, a prominent corner element. In this case, we're going to curve it slightly to take advantage of that corner condition. We also just, you know, everything's dropping below the corner sign, but we are also keeping this kind of three D volumetric sign in LED fashion.
And before you move it, what is that on the roof? Is that a new sign?
That's the, see, this is what was, I'll go back one. That's what's there. We were proposing a different version.
So you're going to leave what's there?
So we're going to leave what's there, we're simply going to replace it with LEDs instead of vinyl.
Do we need to say now that's what was previously approved?
That's what's there now. So we're not going to be changing the location and making it bigger, which was what you had approved before. So this is what's there, just one more time. Here's the existing building, that's what's there, that's what you reviewed and approved. We're going back to what's there, but now in LED.
What is it?
It's a, it's a rooftop sign.
It's not framed with vinyl?
It's a blade. Right now it's vinyl, we wouldn't like to make it LED. And I'll show you what that looks like in plan at the end of this. So here's the diagram that shows the actual replacement of each one as a, and the numbers on your page show that we're dropping by two thousand one hundred twenty-two square feet from nine thousand to seven hundred. Here's the plan of the rooftop sign. So this is the red in plan is what's there and that's the element that we're going to be taking and that's the view from the south, that's the view from the north. We're not touching the northern sign, we're leaving that as is.
So that's the wicked sign you're not touching. It won't be LED?
Right, won't be LED, it's going to stay, just the way it is, vinyl.
No lighting?
It has, it has that outrigger uplighting system to it.
Could you just talk about the storefront improvements or like how you came up with dimensions in the, in terms of their contrast with the main entrance, your two main entrances and the material?
Okay, so the, driven by the, the color of the brass, we're going to be replicating that in a aluminum storefront system. And here's the sample. So it really is the, it's an identical color to the polished brass that's there. So as a material, aluminum being the most expeditious way to build the storefront system today. And the idea was to inset the doors so that the, when they're open, they only extend out more than eighteen inches. So that indentation created a kind of an archway. And I'm going to jump back to, it's in your package, one of the images that Elise had shown you, the drawing, the drawing shows a, the elevational drawing, the historic one, the nineteen thirty drawing. It's one of the first images that you saw, there it is. It has a kind of a punched... It has a kind of a punched storefront system that's very pronounced, and we felt that that would allow us to sort of reiterate that condition here, but without having the double light on top of it, we wanted to just keep the punched opening in a more simple way, giving us some more light and transparency above it.
Thank you. I think we need to make it clear that nineteen thirty design was not...
It was not built, it was merely a suggestion, but we liked the idea that there was a kind of a rhythm of the brass-colored aluminum within, within an otherwise very simple glazed glass wall. So we're trying to keep it minimal and clean, and yet, to use the proportions, the double doors, the height being something that we felt was, these are rather small for, by today's standards, so these are dimensionally...
In your rendering, this one, it's, it's as if that, the main gorgeous entrance isn't really being used, is, I mean, there's a lot of entrances, that's why I'm curious. So how does the main entrance, the one that's historically the entrance to the building...
This one here.
Yeah. How does, how does that fit in within the concept of all of these different storefronts?
So we're hoping that, because we don't know the tenant pattern that's going to evolve over time, we're giving the ownership as much flexibility as possible. Therefore, the A and B options allowing different placement on the facade. And then, and then the signage band, banding above allows to signify where those doors are going with the same flexibility. The, we just don't know if that's going to be a store or not. It is a...
What do you mean, you don't know if it's going to be a store?
Well, we don't know if this will be the entrance to a store.
Or versus...
Versus not even being used at all.
That's terrible. Why wouldn't it be used at all? That's what I'm trying to understand.
I couldn't answer that because I'm not...
But it, but what's going on behind it in this whole, that's kind of what I want to understand, is that...
Flexible...
That's flexible retail space?
Flexible retail, as flexible as possible.
So is it a lobby now?
Right now, it is the lobby. It's a lobby type of entry to the building. So we're proposing a new, a new building lobby over here on Forty-Ninth Street, so that this then is not part of that lobby sequence, because the inside of the building is not a landmark building, and so we'd like to give the ownership as much flexibility as possible.
And you hear, but you only have, do you have a canopy at the corner too? So, and does it come out the same as the canopy over the new building entrance?
Thank you. So there is no canopy here.
Right.
The canopy here is coming out in, to the same distance as the proposed canopy down here.
How far is that?
That is the, it's six feet.
Okay, but now, if you did not, but the fact that you have a canopy makes it really stand out. Maybe it shouldn't so much, because then it's likely in conflict with the historic. I mean, even though you're changing it, its use, does it need to be so prominent? I mean, I understand it needs to be different. Yes, it needs to be different from the store entrances.
Right.
But just that, having a canopy makes it...
So with all the craziness, it's going to be hard to, I think we want to give some indicator that there is an entry to the building on the facade within the storefront landscape. So if it didn't stand out, I think it's going to be hard to see. We are, we're putting the numbers of the building on the side of the, in a kind of relief brass system. So it's...
Or maybe the canopy was not just...
And it's also in competition, it's also in competition with the theater next door, which has a very large marquee.
The marquee that's down the street from that, okay.
Okay, keep going.
So I, I believe I'm finished.
For the restaurant?
There was one other point that I would like to bring up, and that is that although it's not permitted by zoning, the ownership wants us to ask for the possibility, if they were to ask for relief with the zoning conditions, to be able to install a cloth canopy awning system at the storefront level. So we've done a little rendering to put in that request to...